Yeah, it's uh, it's the modifications that have been approved for the flood map changes. And so I've got the same information as well as you got and sent it on to the planner.
Do we need a discussion tonight or no?
I don't believe so. It's within our ordinance, the flood plain management stuff. So it's something that the planning board is going to have to review and request some changes within the ordinance.
All right, see nothing, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved and submitted.
By Dan, seconded by Velma, all those in favor? Public forum. Now is the time to comment from the public on any non-agenda items. Diane, come to the table and tell us your name.
Diane Robbins from Arundel. The reason I'm here and I already sent this to Keith, but I wanted to voice my concerns to you. I watched the December 11th meeting. Where you decided to vote on making our dump cards no good after June 30th. There was no discussion at town meeting about making our cards no longer good. And I didn't see this on the agenda. In regards to having a discussion about terminating or putting an end date on our cards. Before town meeting, I happened to go down and buy a brand new card. I have forty dollars on my card. And I'm sure there, I, I know people that I've spoken to that have taken their cards to the dump to use them. And they're told that they would take them. So I have an issue with the fact that there was something on the agenda that wasn't on the agenda. And something that got voted on. At a meeting where the public was not notified that that was going to be a vote. Because I don't think that I would be the only person to object to end dating those cards. Now, I will be honest, if Casella doesn't like dealing with the cards. Then he should have somebody sitting there and reimburse us back for our money for the cards. And if he doesn't want to reimburse us for the cards, then those cards have no end date on them. And we should be able to use them until they're gone. If I wouldn't have known at the time, I wouldn't have even bought a card. I would have just paid with a check. But I didn't know it was on the agenda for the town meeting. That's my bad. But it also wasn't discussed at town meeting that you were going to end date our cards either. So twice, it should have been discussed at town meeting that the cards were going to be end dated. And I haven't, and you all, we know that I have an issue with voting on things that are not on an agenda. When people don't know what's going to happen. I want my forty bucks back.
Thank you. I'm trying to find the agenda now, but I want to say that it was on the previous meeting's agenda and we tabled it. Because you needed to discuss with Casella in more detail.
Uh, well, not necessarily. You, you folks had taken a vote to, um. To honor the cards until the end of the fiscal year. And I've portrayed, provided that information to Casella and have yet to hear back from them. That your vote would be to at least get them through to the end of the fiscal year and then that. At that particular point, they would then cease to be used.
Yeah, I mean, I think we waited, we initially waited, decided to go to the end of June, just to give people plenty of time to use them. Right, like usually what happens in the springtime, people start clearing up and what have you and.
Sure, and I, I think he wanted to cup it with the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, I had said an earlier date and Tom had mentioned, let's go to the end of the fiscal year, which makes sense, right?
Yeah, and I believe that's what you voted, so that's what's on the.
And at the town hall, we did, when we had our meeting at a town meeting, we did say that the cards were no longer needed, right?
Um, I'd have to look at the minutes of that meeting, but you know. I know, it's one of those issues that we didn't know what was going to happen until after the vote was taken. Whether the, whether we were doing away with the, with the cards as a whole. Whether the folks were going to approve funding the entire budget. Which they have now, so I mean, things changed very quickly in a short amount of time.
So.
One, no. Yeah, just make sure the microphone's on.
Chip Bassett. Simple question. Do you guys know how much is outstanding on cards that are unused? And if so, can't the town just pay us back?
There must be a record.
How big a dollar amount are we talking?
We, we know, we know that, we know.
Yeah, it's about, I think it's about fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars. Um, it's money that's already been paid to Casella. And they've, they've agreed to honor the cards to the end of the year. So.
So I, I, I use the transfer station to dispose of my trash.
Sure.
Nothing else. I have twenty bucks or so left on my card. What am I going to use it for? I just made a donation to Casella.
I mean, you can use it for, if you have like a house disposable.
My point is, I don't.
Okay.
Oh, well, the other thing you can do is you could donate it. You could donate your proceeds and get a tax write-off on it. You donated to the general assistance office and provide, well, you're looking for options for twenty dollars? You're looking for options for twenty dollars. I'm just making a suggestion that that's a possibility that. A person who has lost twenty dollars or forty dollars and wishes to regain it could get it as a tax write-off.
I think you missed my point. My point was, it was not on the agenda. My point was, we didn't discuss it at town meeting that our cards were going to get end dated. And you did so without telling the town that you were going to vote to end date them. That's my issue. We're not supposed to be, you know, I've lived in this town for a long time. And most of you know who I am, and you know how I like things to run. I don't like it when we do votes on items that are not necessarily on the agenda. I mean, if you have to pay a bill, that's one thing. But you're talking about handing money over to Casella, and I'm sorry, but I can't stand Casella. And I don't want him to have a penny of my money. And forty dollars for me is a lot of money. And it's a brand new card. I've never gotten to use it. Now, I don't know when I'm going to take my town, my house down. When I do, I'm sure I'll have some demo debris. But I don't want to take a chance that it doesn't happen until later. Or that I have, that I have so much that I have to bring in a.
Dumpster.
A dumpster, and then I don't use it. We've already paid this money to this company. It shouldn't matter when we use our cards. He has our money already. You're, you're double paying him. So you're paying out of our tax money for trash that some people in town have already paid for. If he wants to end date the cards, then he should have somebody at the dump to pay us for what's left on our cards. If he doesn't want to take them anymore, then he should pay us back for what's on our cards. Now, I know that you didn't get the money from the cards. To the best of my knowledge, he gets paid, when I bought it, I made my checkout to Pine Tree. It wasn't to the town. And there's nothing on my card that says that it's going to end date. So this is wrong. It's wrong to treat the citizens in this town this way. They've had mixed messages at the dump because I've had more than one person say that they went to use their card and they were told they couldn't use it. So they ended up paying, so I don't know if they kept it, well, I know one person kept their card. But if they're telling them they won't take them, people don't know. And I'm not sure that this is something that's really been broadcast to the people in town that it's going to end date.
That, that happened a couple, a couple, um, like about a week and a half, Diane, where. Uh, they get miscommunications over there. Uh, one of the individuals that had been gone all summer came back. And he said, no, we can't take the cards. Keith got a hold of them, we got it squared away and they now can take the cards. And I know that it has been, at least on, um, um, social media, it has been broadcasted out that, hey, we can take the cards. We haven't said anything any further than what was at this meeting on how. On, on the end date yet, because I was kind of waiting to hear from Casella.
But once again, my point was, it was done without being put on the agenda. It was done without input from the people in town because no one knew it happened. It wasn't, I said something, so they, they did what? And I go, yeah, they end dated them. You can't use them any later than June 30th. Well, that's wrong. I'm just saying, I find it wrong. I don't think you should be voting, unless it's an emergency or an, an emergency expense, especially with the storms we've had. You shouldn't be voting on issues that are not on the agenda.
Thank you, Diane. Anything else, public forum, non-agenda related?
Question four. What does Casella say about the cards because there is no end date on the cards? Allowing them to be used until they're used, until they're all used up?
I certainly haven't discussed the, the fact that there's an end, no end date on the card.
We should, you have something else?
No, I just, he just, Velma just said it.
All right, approval of the minutes, January 8th. Make a motion, we approve as submitted? Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil to approve the minutes. All those in favor? We have no committee and board reports. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, it's just a couple of things, um. As I've indicated, uh. We have advertised for our tax collector customer service position. Uh, we've had, uh, to, to this date, forty-four applicants. I began screening the applicants last week and interviewed two folks this morning. Uh, this afternoon, and I have one on Thursday, and then I have a couple others that. That, uh, just haven't gotten back to us yet. I've narrowed it down to, um. Folks with some sort of customer service bank telling interest. Uh, within their past work experience, as well as, um. Folks that have previous municipal experience. Presently, out of the forty I have, I have. Uh, I think there's three, maybe four that have past municipal experience, either deputy town clerk, or. Tax collector at various places, so. Um, obviously, they're, they're higher on our list to talk to. Um, because it would make the transition very easy. So it's an ongoing process and as I've told everybody, um. As soon as we find somebody, um, we'll go ahead and make an offer and try to get them employed as soon as possible, so. So it's moving along. It always amazes me that, uh, that I put out an advertisement on our website. And advertisement on the, um, MMA listserv for tax collectors and. Town clerks, and I received forty of them in less than, maybe a week, so. The other thing that, and I provided a copy of the, um, the new agreement in your packet for reference purposes, but. Um, if you recall, part of the, um, Cape Arundel has a performance assurance agreement. Uh, with MDOT along with the town of Arundel to, um. To provide a turn lane on Route One. Um, for access for folks heading northbound on Route One to get into their property. Um, that assurance agreement, um, was signed, um, last, I think it was last year with a. Um, with a date on it that of, as of October of 2023, that the, um. Cape Arundel folks would have a plan that would be approved by MDOT for construction on the, um, on Route One. What occurred was that the plan, um, and it sort of gets convoluted when you have a bunch of. Uh, state agencies that continue to get involved in this. The plan had been submitted by Cape Arundel in enough time to meet the October deadline and had been sitting up there. For several weeks before it finally, uh, was acknowledged that it was there and that, um, approval was pending. Uh, in the meantime, another agency within the, uh, department, uh, thought that the. Assurance agreement had lapsed and that, uh, they were in serious violation and what was the town going to do about it, so. Um, what we've done is we've, uh, talked to all parties. Um, MDOT has the plan. We're hoping that it's going to get approved, which I think it will. Um, and now we have an end date of August 2024 for that project to be completed, so. It'll be sometime this summer that they'll do that work. Um, in the event that it doesn't get done, uh, there's a million dollar escrow account that's been set up. Um, in which the town then can tap those resources and ensure that that project gets completed, so. I think all parties, and particularly the Cape Arundel folks, want to get it done. Uh, and I think this was just a hiccup, uh, in the process, but is being ironed out now. They will be expecting a, a signature by me at some point. I'm just waiting for them to, um. Get back to me as to when they need a signature, then MDOT as well as, um. The, um, cottages will sign the agreement and extend it. Um, and I heard today that, uh, Joe Palalini's wife, Faith Easter, has passed away. Um, which sort of ends, puts another monkey wrench into the process, so we're still waiting to see. What will be happening, happening with, with that process, but.
She passed away?
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard that today, so, uh, very unfortunate. She seemed like a very nice lady to deal with and I had. Had several conversations with her on the phone to make sure that things were getting done, so. I haven't heard anything else, so. The next thing on my, um, my report to you, uh, has to do with the, um. The sheriff's cruiser from, uh, York County. As you know. Several years have gone by. We've had some money that has been set aside and unfortunately it lapsed, um, I think last year. Uh, as a result of, um, Ford Motor Company and COVID not having cars available, uh, to be purchased, so. I've just caught, uh, been informed by, uh, the sheriff's department that they, um. Awarded the bids to Arundel Ford to, uh, provide cruisers to the sheriff's office. Um, the unit will be forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And we had set aside forty-five thousand dollars for that, uh, purchase of that vehicle. Um, what I found interesting is part of the email that they sent me is that, um, the present Arundel. Vehicle is now going to be what they call deadlining, um. They're going to be taking it out of service and providing a spare, a patrol spare to one of our Arundel, um. Offices until the new vehicle is here, gets outfitted and is ready for service, so. My question was, what's deadlining? Um, and the response I got is actually deadlining is. A vehicle that has high mileage on it and is, is met a certain year that they wish to take out of service, so. Um, essentially, I don't believe there's anything wrong with the vehicle. And, um, it will be in our possession hopefully in the next week or so. Um, at that time, uh, we have a. We will have two vehicles, uh, both the fire chief's vehicle and. This vehicle that we're going to have our, um, mechanic take a look at. And it's my view that which one of those two is the best is the one we'll keep. And the other one we'll send to auction, uh, to, to dispose of it. Um, and we've held off on the present. Fire chief's vehicle because it's, and if you driven by the fire department, you'll notice covered in snow on the back of the yard and that. It needs a, a complete brake job. And the, the brake jobs are pretty expensive, so in lieu of doing, spending the money on something that we may be sending to auction. We just held off until this other unit gets here and we have an, an assessment of it and we can decide which one of the two is the best to keep, so. Uh, and then also, we also have one for our, uh, staff here, code, code officer and. And then if staff have to travel someplace, they take the one that we have here, so.
What's the condition of that one?
It's in good shape.
Yeah.
Yep, it, you know, these don't get the road miles that a, that a unit would, uh, get for the fire, for the police service, so. Um, I think they'll give us years of service. And continue to function properly.
One up, oops, that's the one at the town garage.
Uh, is it, if, yeah, usually it's kept here during the summer, but during the winter, we move it up to the garage because of plowing. And then up there, they can stick it in the corner and they can do their plowing down here, and then if. If Jim needs it, he drives up with his car and picks up the town car and does his business for the town, so. That's how the process is working right now.
All right, you've got another appointment for the Board of Assessment Review?
Yes, um, Jens Peter Bergen, who was at one time on our planning board, has shown an interest to. Serve on the Board of Assessment Review. Uh, I'd like to move, uh, that. His appointment, um, uh, be approved by the board.
Promotion on that? Motion by Phil, seconded by Tom. All those in favor?
I have the paperwork right here. We'll send it on down. I'm still waiting for two more folks to serve on that board. I've, I've got two inquiries out, um, hoping to hear back before the end of the week so I can finalize that. By charter, we're required to have a Board of Assessment Review, which. Uh, provides the opportunity to any resident or property owner. Who disagrees with their, um, assessment, uh, to file an abatement, and if the abatement gets. Denied by the tax assessor, it provides them an opportunity to be heard locally. Um, and they have a decision made locally. In the event they don't like that, they can always take it to superior court from that point on, so.
So we do have, we do have one waiting, right, and that will, that will hold up until.
We have, we have one that's pending right now, um. And the sixty days isn't up yet, so it'll be up, uh, sometime in the middle of next month, so. Um, we'll get the committee together, make sure they have all the ground rules. We'll probably have to get. The attorney involved in this, is it's really a, um, judicial procedure. In which testimony is taken, decisions are made based on the evidence that's produced, so. Um, so there's a process to it, so.
All right, we're looking to have a discussion on approval requirements for exempt private ways?
Uh, no, it's just a discussion on street design and construction ordinance. Um, and I did mention, um, exempt private ways in my, um, my stuff to you and. What, and I had a discussion both with the, the planner today, uh, Public Works and. Uh, both code office, which are part of the staff review committee when they look at these, uh. And from what I can gather, I think they've solved some of the issue that came up, um, very recently in regards to this, but. Um, they feel that there may be some additional changes that could be made within the ordinance. Uh, to sort of streamline it even more than it is right now. This, um, from what I gathered from conversations, that there was some confusion from time to time as to how to interpret it. And they feel that a little bit more cleaning up of the language may, um, help do that. So what I would like to do is I would like to, um, provide, um. The ability of both the, uh, staff review committee, um, who uses this and utilizes it quite effectively. Uh, to come back with some recommendations as to what changes may be proposed within this ordinance. Uh, to just sort of clean it up. That would be my, my goal with it.
How far away are they from providing information?
Uh, I think they're, I think they're ready to, to go. I mean, the planner felt that a lot of the stuff that's. In the beginning of the ordinance could really be removed if it's, if we really want to, um, sort of focus on, because. Roads that are going to be accepted by the public have a certain standard that they have to meet regardless of whether they're in the. Ordinance or in the subdivision regulations. Um, and then the private ways, uh, exempt private ways and those things, um. They felt it could be a little more better clean language in reference to that, so. I was just gathering your thoughts if you wanted to be, get involved in that process, if any of you do. But they certainly will bring whatever, whatever changes they're proposing back to this board, um, for review and discussion.
I'm certainly all for making it cleaner because it's been a pain in the butt over the years.
Well, yeah, and I think, uh, I think when we, we made some changes, uh, uh, to it. It was our, it was the attempt to clean it up and make it easier for, for those existing roads. Uh, to get those permits, um, if they've already been previously established, so on and so forth, so. And then also we had the limitation on the ten lots, which I think continues to remain. Uh, regardless, I think that was a discussion that we had today as well, so.
Any more discussion on this?
Well, good.
All right, moving on. I need a motion for payable and payroll. Motion. Motion by Dan, seconded by Velma, all those in favor? Sign away. Sign away. Anything else pending?
Yeah, real quick. Um, I just want to clear up something from Diane, um. I had asked to have that on the agenda and it didn't get put on in time, so I'd asked to have a discussion. We got talking about it, and then I made the motion, and you're a hundred percent right. We should not have made that motion without it being on the agenda. Kind of things got going wrong, got talking, and we wanted to put the issue to bed. And I made the motion and we followed through with it. So I apologize, you're a hundred percent right. We should not have made any motion concerning that without putting it on the agenda. I know I've stuck with that in the past, said, hey, listen, we shouldn't be putting things on the agenda, so I, I apologize, um, see to that.
And you heard that Keith was gonna reach out to Casella about the no end date on the cards.
So it was a bit out of the cards, period, and we wanted to address that. So we were trying to make sure that Casella was going to address this card. That's, that was, was the issue that we were concerned.
Right, right. That, that's why, that's why we brought it up. We brought it up because we said, wait a minute, this is not right. And that's why we brought it up. We, we wanted people to use their cards. And that's why we pushed it out like we did, so that people could use their cards. Now, if come June thirtieth, people still have cards, well then. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I don't want anybody to lose money. I mean, I still got twenty-some odd bucks on mine. I plan on using it. But, you know, I, I don't want people to lose money, absolutely.
Recycling is charging, is, it's costing more to get rid of cycling, and it is trash now.
All, all kinds of towns are struggling with recycling.
Correct.
Yep. Make a motion, we adjourn at seven thirty-one P M?
Motion by Dan. Seconded by Keith, seconded by Phil. All those in favor?
I can't second that.
I'll have that authority.